I'm going to call the meeting of the Sanborn Regional School Board to order. All right, we'll stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Did you hear from Pete?
Yeah.
He's likely not going to be able to make it.
Pete's going to make it, but he's running late.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you, Jean.
Yep.
Okay, Jocelyn's not here yet, so can I get an action on the minutes from January 19th, 2022? Move to approve. Second.
I have something about the minutes. Um, under item eight, article eight, you've got Baker making the motion and approve in the second. Yeah.
So typical of you.
So the video will have. No, that's. Yep, yep, nope, no big deal.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
All right, any other comments? All right, so do we need to amend the motion to accept?
It's okay, Jocelyn.
As amended.
Yeah, I moved to accept the minutes as amended, or does, who made you?
I don't read it. I did, yeah.
Okay, Tammy.
Whatever, I'll, 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 whatever, amend my motion if, however that needs to happen.
And then Heather, did you second?
I did.
Do you mind amending your second?
I will amend my second to match the changes, thank you.
All right, there's no further conversation, all in favor? All right, unanimous, great. Jocelyn, I know you have a game to get to, so if you would like to do your report, I'd love to have it.
So there's not a lot happening tonight, there are three basketball games, which is super awesome. It's JV boys, varsity boys, and then the last home game and game overall for our seniors this year for the girls' basketball team. So hopefully they do pretty well tonight, which is super exciting that we have three games in a row. Especially during a school week, but doesn't happen a lot, but it's nice that everyone gets to play. We also today had a job expo, Ms. Ali works very hard. I think she worked with a few other people to get a ton of people that are very good at their job in engineer, electrician, kind of more hands-on job versus like a college type thing, because there are a lot of people that support college and that's awesome. But there were a lot of resources that she was able to bring in for painting and other type of future jobs. And she ran it really well, everyone was super happy, there was a lot of attendance and a lot of people talking to the students for their career, which is awesome. So that was that. Student Council is moving winter carnival, which is usually held in February, to right before April vacation, just because it's safer, the better thing to do. So we're making that kind of in the plans. It's not, nothing's finalized yet, we know it's not going to be in February, because that is three weeks away. Um, and I think that's pretty much it, but there's a lot of fun stuff going on at the school, so yeah.
Awesome, all right, now get to your game.
Thank you.
Before Jocelyn, before, before Jocelyn goes, I just wanted to say, Jocelyn has been nominated for the New Hampshire School Boards Association Scholarship and is in the process of collecting her recommendations. And that's the first time we've done that for a student in Sanborn since I've been here. And I wanted to point out that the thing that made me feel comfortable bringing that forward was her incredible work on the food kitchen that she's done this year. It really is way above and beyond, so thank you, Jocelyn, for everything that you've done, yeah. All right, good luck.
All right, manifest documents have gone around, no nominations, no resignations, Tom, your superintendent's report.
Okay, I will do this as quickly as possible, it's a long one. I just wanted to say to everyone that I have been doing a lot of research, conversations and homework on, with regard to the move of grades three and seven, can you all hear me in the back? I know, can you hear me in the back? All right, there we go.
Three and six.
Thank you, grades three and six. And I just need to pull that document up. So I have some information for the community that I'll be sharing also in a video and, and some slides. And I'll just share this information for the public record this evening. So I've done an analysis of our current and projected enrollments. This year we have 1,428 students in the district. Nezdek has projected that we would have 1387, 1,387 in 2021, and 1,358 in 2022 and 2023. We have approximately 41 students more this year than we were predicting. And we will have approximately 75 more students over the enrollments predicted by Nezdek next year in grades K through 12. For the 2021 school year, we have 404 students at Bakey, 257 students at Memorial, 201 at the middle school and 566 at the high school. So that's this current school year. Despite being slightly higher than the Nezdek projections, we are much lower than the enrollment in 2017, just prior to the reorganization. In 2016 and 17, we had 1,675 students. Our enrollment has dropped by 250 students and is projected to stay between 1,300 and 1,400 until 2031. As I review the data, it's interesting to note that our enrollments were 1,950 students in the 2008, 2009 school year. So 1,950 in the 2008, 2009 school year to 1425. So we have, we have lost a significant number of students, 525 since the high school opened. Just so everyone knows, I do have this document in writing, we'll share it publicly on the web, so if folks in the, are writing notes or trying to track all this, it'll be available in a, an easy to read format. We've had a steady decline in enrollment for 14 years, the increase due to COVID is minimal because it's spread over so many grades. So even though it's about 40 students, it's not, they weren't really concentrated too much at one level. The middle school saw a little bit more of a bump than other levels. So for 2022 and 2023, Bakey will house 306 students. And that does assume a kindergarten class of 90 students, which is an average kindergarten class for us. And the building has a maximum capacity of about 458 students, including the 10% amount that Nezdek recommended, that we have a buffer of about 10% in any building for, for possible, you know, anomalies or, or unanticipated changes in our enrollments. Memorial will house 289 students, and that building has a 253 student capacity without the four portables. So when the portables are in full use as they are in today, they have 350 student capacity. It's important to note, the portables are aging and they are going to need to be addressed by our organization at some point. We did put a new roof on the, the double portable that's outside, so that's helped holding up very well. And we have had some issues recently with some water damage in one of the portables. The middle school for next year will house 269, and the high school will house 543 students, for a total of 812 students for next year. The middle school, high school capacity is 1,056 students. Nezdek did build in that 10% buffer for each building with their estimates, and these enrollments are consistent with those, those estimates. Here's the interesting part. A couple of parents asked me, what happens as the grades move up from third and fourth grade into the next grade, into the next grade? And so I did an analysis of that, and this is where it gets interesting. In 2023 and 2024, the middle school will house 257 students, while the high school goes down to 459 to 475, depending on Fremont. That's a total of 716 to 741 students at this, this middle school, high school campus. Which means that in a building built for 1,056 students, we'll only have seven, a max of 741 students. In the 24, 25 school year, it's 739 to 764. And in the 2026 to 2027, it's 720 to 745. Again, it depends on the number of students that Fremont sends, sometimes they send us 30, sometimes they send us 40. Next year they're sending 38. I talked to the superintendent the other day. So then, as I was doing this research, I decided to check in with Mrs. DeRochers, because she was the principal of the middle school last year. Met with her and she shared some perspective that I think is important to note. She said that having been the principal of the middle school last year, um, there's only 200 students, but it's really difficult to do observations and improve instruction without an assistant principal, because a person cannot manage the behaviors of students and observe teaching and learning at the same time. Certainly the pandemic, as we all know, has increased the concerns about emotional regulation, coming back to school full-time, and we are working hard on that. Mrs. DeRocher noted that the addition of the assistant principal and guidance counselor will help improve the, the, the situation with regard to academics and instruction. From a curriculum perspective, the shift enables teachers to plan along a sixth, eighth, sixth, seventh and eighth grade continuum, so that the students will have real-life science experiences in lab settings. So the sixth grade students will have in-depth and rigorous instruction from teachers who are content specialists. This is especially true for science and social studies. We certainly believe that this instruction will better prepare students for their high school experience. The developmental bands for the curriculum are traditionally set up in a six, eight continuum, with numerous publishers and instructional programs following the setup. Mrs. DeRochers just wanted to mention that this would streamline the costs as well as the professional development for the teachers as well. One thing that she recommended that I thought was really important to note is that she recommended a half-day move-up for students entering grade six in June. And I would just amend that a little bit to say also for seventh grade, because they haven't been at the facility. So we would need to have a sixth and seventh grade move-up day, which, which will be fine. And that would allow the students to spend a half-day in the new surroundings, meeting teachers, attending lunch while becoming acclimated to the new surroundings. Our goal should be to ease the transition and alleviate anxiety associated with the shift. And Mr. Malila is actually going to run some, some middle school open house time this next few weeks to help kids that are in fifth grade that are feeling a little nervous about the decision to come over. I also spent some time researching the mixing of students. I met with Mr. Stack and Mr. Malila, and they shared, you know, I talked to them after I observed PE and the library. So I just kind of showed up and dropped in with no notice to kind of see how things were going with regard to those courses. And they've been working really hard, creating floor plans, meeting with staff and working on schedules. So far, there seem to be a lot of efficiencies created by moving the sixth grade to the middle school. It's making the music program schedule much better. Mr. Stack and Mr. Malila have come up with a floor plan that appears to use less classrooms than we anticipated originally because of a creative idea that they had for reorganizing some offices, we'll present that to the board in a few weeks. The high school and middle school have started working on firming up the schedule. That work will continue for a few months as the course selection process for the high school is not yet finalized. And we feel that moving the sixth grade while implementing the new high school master schedule makes a lot of sense, because they're already rewriting the schedule. It's more, more efficient to integrate sixth grade while the high school schedule is being changed than to set a schedule up, move the sixth grade later and then redo the master schedule again in a year or two, it's a big process to redo the master schedule. I, I, back to the original topic of this section, I've heard feedback from parents. And, and I want everyone to know that I listen very closely when people say that they're concerned about something, particularly regarding student safety or well-being. And so I came over and observed some things and asked questions myself, because I wanted to hear what was going on. I made unannounced visits to classes, and I talked with the administrators about rumors of the middle school students being mixed with high school students during lunch, class times, transitions, et cetera. So I went to PE class. And I, what I learned was that middle and high school students do not have physical education classes together, but they sometimes have PE in one half of the gym while, so a middle school class may be in one half of the gym, while a high school class is in the other half of the gym. And so students may quote "see each other," which they will see each other in a, if they're in the same building, but they're not technically in class together. So I think that's just important to note, that if I have my older son Noah is in gym class, and David's in gym class on the other side of the gym, Noah might come home and say, I saw David in gym today. That's fair, and it's true, he did see him in gym, but they're not in gym class together. The gym has a huge dividing curtain, and there are teachers for each class on separate sides of the gym. They're over 100 feet away from each other, most of the, most of the class. Art, our classes are completely separate. On occasion, the art teacher might ask a high school student or a middle school student to go to the other art teacher and ask for a supply item. Again, this is a time when high school and middle school students may see each other, but they're not technically in class together. The library, as we are in the library now, you can imagine that if we were the high school students on this side of the library and middle school students come through and go to their side of the library, they'll see each other. But they're not in library class together, right? So it's just, there's some truth to this message that the kids see each other or that they're in an area together, they are. But they're, they're, they're in their own area within that area. The one that I thought was interesting, it's super personal for me, was music. So I had heard concerns that middle school music is having high school students, that they're having music together. Again, it's, it's not entirely true, but as always, there's some grain of truth to these kinds of things. On the middle school concert, they didn't have students playing certain instruments at the middle school level. So high school kids came and joined the middle school band and played the instruments with the kids. And what I suggested to the principals is, in the future, email the parents and let them know that's what's happening. My wife taught band for 18 years at the middle school level, and they always had high school kids come down and fill in for the empty seats, because it builds relationships for kids going to band in the high school, right? It's a really great thing that we do, but it just, when, when, you know, when, when we're doing, in a new world and everyone asks a lot of questions, I feel bad that there was confusion about that, so we cleared that up. Again, I think the key to that is just emailing parents and saying, hey, we, we may be, we may see high school kids in the middle school band filling in. Which, good, I think that's really fun, right? I talked to Matt and Brian about the expectations for housing the middle school at the high school facility. I asked the middle school students to pass to specials and lunch on a staggered manner. And that means that the schedules of the two buildings are similar, but the start of class passing time for middle school will be right after the high school to start a unified arts course and just before the high school students return to the middle school wing. And we also talked about using other staff to help with transitions while we continue to try to fill the intervention and teacher para positions. The last thing that I, I wanted to cover this evening, well, there are two things, but the, the first one is intervention. And I'm not going to read through all of this, I'm just going to simply summarize. I just want to clarify for the community that we have, when the district was reorganized, we funded six teachers, two for Bakey, two for Memorial and two for the middle school. Out of the $930,000 that was allocated to academic intervention, those positions are completely filled and functioning better today than they ever have, because as the pandemic quarantines have changed, those teachers aren't having to cover classes as much as they used to. They're actually able to do some intervention, which is really great. So we have all six teaching positions, one para position is filled at Bakey. And as I said to the board in November, we have the other 10 para positions. I'm, I'm asking that the community please support the para contract or the support staff contract, because we're having difficulty filling positions because of the starting pay. The second thing that's important to note is that all those positions are still in the budget. And we've even advertised, the cost of a teacher is roughly the cost of two paras. So we've advertised some teaching positions, and if we can't get the paras, we'll hire teachers. And we have had a couple of people coming on board for a couple of those positions, but we're still not quite, quite full yet. So the program is fully funded, and we're just trying to fill the seats. Matt and Brian made a really great point when I was meeting with them. They said it's, it's really not fair to assume that students from the middle school will never see a high school student. They will, you're in the building, you're going to walk by them, you're going to see them maybe the ways that I've described. And, and honestly, I just want to be clear that we've held true to our promise to take steps to minimize, minimize interactions and carefully monitor the students in the, the, the common areas. Mr. Malila has worked incredibly hard this year on that. And Mr. Stack even assigned duties to support this in light of the unfilled staffing position. So if you walk down the hallway in the high school, you see the hall monitor desk, it has an actual sign on it. And teachers are sitting there monitoring the hallways, trying to help with these things. So then I kind of got a little more curious, I'm like, well, what do the kids think? So today I was reading to some eighth grade students, as I had said earlier, I'm at a different meeting. I read a book to the eighth grade students as part of the read-aloud day today. And after that, I took a few minutes and I said, hey, how are things going this year for you? I met with you last spring and you told me that you were really happy at this building as seventh graders. Where, how are things going now? The vast majority of students reported that they were very happy being here. One student did say that they preferred the old middle school, and I was really proud of that person, they spoke up. And they said, I liked it better when we had our own school. And the other students said, no, we, we like it here. And that's fine, and I said, that's totally cool, because that's what happens when we make a change, not everyone loves the change. This is totally congruent with the information that the students shared at the end of last year when I met with them. And it's important to note that, that when I meet with students, I structure them so that students talk in small groups. Usually I'll, I'll ask them to have a group of four students and choose one student to report out, so that the kids can have an activity that's designed to give students who don't always speak, an opportunity to share freely, right? Because some of us are more extroverted than others. Sorry, might include me. And everyone needs to have a voice in things, so we want to set those things up so that they can give us feedback. The last piece that I want to talk about is costs. We, we've, we found a way to handle this move in a very cost-neutral manner. And the business side of the district has begun developing a schedule to facilitate the move. The middle school assistant principal will be paid for by moving the special education coordinator position from Bakey to cover the cost. But I just want to make sure everyone knows that Jody Gutterman has a plan to keep the person that's currently in the coordinator position in a different capacity using grant funds, so they'll still have a job and a role at Bakey. There are some additional costs to filling the position, but we've always had some ups and downs with resignations and new hires, so we anticipate that any costs will be covered through natural attrition. Bakey is losing 100 students in this process, the school currently has two guidance counselors. We'll move one guidance counselor from Bakey to the middle school. But we will provide additional guidance support at Bakey for the next couple of years, using the grant-funded position that we hired at the last school board meeting. Dan Doyle is going to handle building any walls that need to be built at the, at the middle school. By using in-house construction, this will be a very low-cost item. And our custodians are going to handle the physical move, so there'll be no additional cost for that. We still don't quite know exactly the layout of the walls at the, the building. For the, when we add the sixth, the sixth grade students, the layout is still kind of being discussed. So there may be some HVAC costs depending on the layout, but we're not thinking that there going to be much. Mr. Angel feels that we won't need to modify the HVAC system, however, we just need to double-check and make sure that that's totally finished. Bathrooms, we are not recommending that the district add a student bathroom to the second floor. The middle school has a new bathroom on the first floor, and there'll be a single unisex bathroom on the second floor. If the school board wants to add a bathroom on the second floor, there'd be a one-time cost of about $230,000. But we would prefer to have the move occur and then discuss a bathroom if there is a need, and there's, it's not just a fiscal reason. An additional bathroom takes up classroom space, and we, we only want to take out classroom space if we really have to. So we feel that the bathrooms will be adequate, but we are happy to revisit and then discuss that. I think it's important for everyone to understand that this move is relatively easy compared to the district reorganization. We are not changing the, the goalposts regarding the critical curriculum work, NIASK, the strategic plan or other initiatives. The principals have hit the ground running, and they're already working on locations for staff and are working on that master schedule that I talked about earlier. Looking forward, we have three things that we're going to need to discuss in the future regarding the move. One is paving the parking lot near the tennis courts. Additional parking would help to improve student drop-off and, and pickup flow. The parking is a little bit tight overall, but we believe that we can wait to do this until after we've moved the sixth grade for a year, and then assess the parking at the close of the 22, 23 school year. The reason why is that the move will add approximately 10 adult cars to the campus, but the high school numbers are declining, so we believe that that will balance the load on the parking lots, right? So when you look at those enrollments that went down at the high school, those senior enrollments are the drivers. So I think we're going to have more spaces. I already covered the additional bathroom, and then the third one is an outdoor area for recreation, recess and lunch. Administration will be asking about some outdoor activities. Mr. Stack likes to make fun of me, because I don't know what a Gaga pit is. I guess it's some game that the kids play in, and I just said, you can show me that later. But they just want to have some activities for the kids outside, and I'm very excited to experience the Gaga pit. But whatever we choose to do, there'll be some work on that as a community, and, and we'll talk about that later. Mr. Malila will be running a sixth grade transition committee for parents who would like to be involved. If you'd like to join this committee, please email him at MrMalila, I'm sorry, MrMalila@Mmalila, M-A-L-I-L-A at sau17.net. I hope this information provides answers to your questions, and if you have any further questions, please reach out to me or the principal of the building you have a question about, we are always happy to help. And that is the longest superintendent's report I will ever do in my career.
I don't know, I'm not, I'm not.
That was a long one.
I was going to say, I'm pretty sure that's a long one.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
This one was pretty interesting.
Oh, good, I'm glad you enjoyed it, thank you very much. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
She knows I'm competitive.
All right, we'll move on to committee reports then. Policy.
Policy just met this evening, I will have minutes at our next meeting.
Excellence in Student Achievement.
Yep, Excellence in Student Achievement met on January 19th. In attendance were myself, Mr. Fitzpatrick, Ms. Dutton, Mr. Ambrose, Dr. Haynes, Ms. DeRocher, Ms. Levitt, Mr. Stack, Mr. Kurzenowski, Mr. Malila, Mr. McCloskey and Dr. Kennett. We had several items on our agenda. First, Mrs. DeRocher presented information on the district-wide NIASK accreditation process. That's New England Association of Schools and Colleges. This is a lengthy process that will extend into 2024. NIASK will be evaluating the district on these standards, learning culture, student learning, professional practices, learning support and learning resources. And a rubric has been provided with the foundational elements that need to be met. In February, that's targeted for surveys, surveys to be issued for all stakeholders to complete. And from that, a report will be produced before the end of the year. The first visit from NIASK will be next year, and the accreditation visit will take place in December 2024. Mr. Fitzpatrick expressed some concern over the resource consumption for this multi-year process. But the administration believes that this work will help to support the strategic plan work as the district reflects on its goals and vision for the future and creates priority areas for school growth plans. Mr. Ambrose reported that the grading task force had a call scheduled with Ken O'Connor. That's a well-known education consultant who specializes in grading practices, to have a discussion with him. Our next EISA meeting will have an in-depth discussion of grading practices, that's going to begin at 3:30. Mr. Malila provided an update of the high school schedule committee's work to revise the requirements to earn a diploma with distinction. Based on research from other schools, that's an uncommon diploma. Most schools that do offer it use GPA as the criteria. The committee is going to, that committee is going to be discussing some various possibilities and develop a proposal for us, either at our next meeting or the following, hopefully. Dr. Haynes reported that the seven through 12 math curriculum search is progressing. Grade seven through eight have decided to stop piling, the, stop piloting illustrative math, and they're switching to begin a new pilot of a program called mid-school math. The high school is piloting the third, the second of three programs that they were piloting this year. And materials are targeted to be available for review in March. Dr. Haynes reported that the strategic plan first draft survey results are being evaluated for incorporation into a second draft, that's already happened, obviously. Two focus group sessions will be held for community feedback, they were held on January 26th and 27th. So as I mentioned, our next meeting is February 16th, two weeks from today. That will be at 3:30, from 3:30 to 5:30, so we can have an extensive discussion on grading practices.
Thank you. Finance.
Our next meeting will not be on the 16th at 3:30, because we're going to make room for our friends at the Excellence in Student Achievement Committee. I have to work with Mr. Angel to pick a time, and then with Mr. Baker, Baker and Ms. Bashar to schedule that, and then we'll announce that once we have the time structured and scheduled.
Facilities.
Yep.
Facilities met today. I'll, I'll give the report at the next meeting. But we had a meeting in the library at Bakey, and then we did a tour of the Bakey facilities, looking at areas that are coming up that are, are of, you know, a uh, looking at areas that are coming up that are, are of, you know, particular concern for refurnishing or, or repairs, that sort of thing.
Thank you. Uh, public relations.
Public relations met earlier this evening. Um, we, we discussed the strategic plan and the focus groups. I thought, I believe those are on our agenda tonight, so I won't go into too much detail there. Uh, we discussed the warrant articles. Mr. Ambrose is going to be putting out some educational information and, uh, he's going to write a letter requesting support from the community for the support staff contracts.
Uh, can I just admit, I, I did volunteer to do that, but I will have Mr. Fitzpatrick help me with it.
Cool.
I'll write it, you read it and just tell me what you think.
Pretty much it, I think.
Okay.
Thank you.
Personnel. Um, we met on January 19th. Um, I will have the full, uh, breakdown with the minutes at the next meeting. Um, in our next meeting for personnel, we didn't get bumped yet. It's February 16th at 3:00 P. M.
Be fine.
SST.
They have not met.
Okay. Uh, budget.
Yep. Um, the budget committee met on January 20th. Uh, they voted on recommending the proposed budget, which passed eight to zero. Um, discussion and, uh, voting on the warrant articles, um, to be moved forward. And the next meeting is the public hearing on, um, February 9th. Uh, the, and the other thing too that was discussed was, um, having procedures for the following year for the budget committee. Um, there were some few things that were unclear of how they should be done and processes.
And wellness.
Yes. Uh, wellness met on January 18th. In attendance was Mr. Dawson, Dr. Kennett, Ms. Levitt, Mr. White, Ms. Khalil, Ms. Belcher and myself. Um, and we focused on staff mental health as our wellness. Um, we want to look at bringing back some things that were done pre-pandemic. Um, some mindfulness, some, um, walking challenges and some other things really to support our staff who've been working tremendously hard these past two years. And our next meeting is February 16th.
All right. Uh, first public comment.
Hi, Annie Collier Newton. I wanted to just comment on the superintendent's report on moving grades three and six. Initially, I had some real concerns. One of those was based on the November reporting that there were about 300, $350,000 of anticipated expenses and that wasn't part of your meeting to kind of let us know that that was, that it was going to be cost neutral. I learned that from Ms. Bashaw at the, uh, at the budget committee meeting the following day. Um, the biggest concern that I've had, um, is not to move the goalposts of getting more rigor and getting the, um, getting the curriculum really established vertically and horizontally so that our children don't continue to be failed. Too many of them are being failed by the time they graduate. And I don't think any of us here want to see that happen. I was very glad to hear the superintendent affirm that there is nothing in this move that is going to shift those goalposts or those standards from being met. We have a great conversation going on and things are happening. I really want to see it all implemented. I know you all do as well. So, um, I can, and the superintendent has also assured me that by moving three and six, it's actually going to help some of that implementation, um, as he has studied it further. So, um, at this point, I'm just really looking forward to that. I can also say that when I serve as a sub in the high school, I see kids passing classes and I see the, um, administrators and other paras and teachers out all the time, making sure that the passing in the, in the, in the, in the hallways and so forth goes smoothly. And I don't see interaction. I don't see that kind of thing going on between high school and middle school. Everybody kind of sticks in their own row. Occasionally there's a child who sees, um, one of their siblings and they run over and give them a hug. I mean, that's, that's a different thing than, uh, than the kind of thing to be concerned about. So, um, I want to say that I think it's going smoothly and anticipate it will continue to do so and looking forward to that increased rigor that you guys are all working towards. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. If there's no one else, we'll move on. Um, so Tom has requested that we move 7.2 ahead of 7.1. No one opposed. I will let him do so. All right.
Thank you. Um, so we've been doing so much work on the strategic plan. I'll just do a quick, very quick review of the process. In August, the administration met and drafted the first draft of the strategic plan. And then it was shared with the staff. Uh, you, you know what? Hold on. Dr. Haynes, can you come up to the mic and just walk us through the process? I want you to get credit for what you've done.
Having issues with my eyes today because, you know, as you get older, you can't see anything anymore. Um, so strategic plan, the process. Where do I begin? Um, so I'll start with the most recent developments that we've gone through. I have had conversations with everybody either on the phone, in person, or most recently a quick email because, um, folks have been very busy to get feedback from everybody on the board for what's been going on with the strategic plan and getting their input. That came as a result of the second draft that went out. That's currently posted and it's still sitting there on the website. That second draft that is on the website was fleshed out from the first, what we're calling a working document that the administrators worked on to develop over the summer. So we had started back in June. We had worked out looking at strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats to the district, put together what you saw for the first working draft document that a lot of the commentary came back in on. We took all of the commentary from the first survey that was put out. And Christine DeRozier, who's sitting in the back and I worked out, um, all of that information, all of the feedback, took all the, the survey input, the principals and their administrative teams in their respective buildings, each took a component, narrowed it down for us and we worked out the second draft, which is what was, um, on the website now. We had two focus groups meeting. One of them was on the 26th from three to four. The other one was the 27th from six to seven and folks gave more input on that. The plan right now to go forward is to take all of that input from the focus groups, the second survey, which a lot of the input on that one was pretty much looks good, looks good, looks good. There wasn't quite as much narrative. And the input that I gathered from the board members, um, in, in speaking with them and to work on a third draft that we're going to deliver around the ninth, which would be next Wednesday. And I say around because there's a lot to knit together. Um, so that's, I don't know, Tom, if you want more than that or?
Well, first of all, I just wanted to make sure that everyone knows from the public perspective, because this is the first time we've done this at a board meeting about the strategic plan, that there was a process of revision and input from the teachers.
Yes.
So there's been surveys that went to the community, but also for after that first draft, staff input was super important.
Right.
And it really is important that everybody have an opportunity to comment on this and the, it's, the feedback's been fantastic. I mean, it, it really, the first draft looked very different than the second draft and I'm sure the third draft will as well. So I, I, I think we're getting a lot of great feedback and um, I just wanted to thank everyone for taking the time to, to chime in. And, and what we were hoping to do tonight was just give the board an opportunity to share any thoughts that they had publicly prior to the next draft. So we were hoping to just have a, 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 you know, have each board member have an opportunity to speak. And if you don't have anything that you want to share, that's perfectly fine, but we haven't had any workshopping in the public about this and the big discussion will be once the third draft is, is ready, we really just have to go through every single, you know, we'll have to do a, a, a planned meeting that is only on the strategic plan for those each area and really go through them.
One other thing I did want to mention, um, because I don't know how far folks have looked at it because it's, it's a pretty dense document. There are components of the document that are static, meaning that they're sort of set. But there's links within the document that link out to sheets that are working documents that are living. And those are where we have the tasks and milestones that are associated with the objectives. The objectives are what we're going to do. The tasks and milestones are basically how we're getting it done and who's doing it. And those are living documents so that whoever the parties are that are responsible to get those done can enter in on a certain date when something is done. So if this was a task or a milestone to actually talk about it at the meeting, somebody would be going in there tonight and saying, February 2nd, 2022, discuss the plan at the board meeting. And just put that in there so that there, it's, it's, it's a two-part document really. There's that static part and then there's the dynamic working, living part.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Haynes. So, Madam Chair, if we could just have each board member have an opportunity to speak, that'd be wonderful.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Laura, do you want to start or do you want to finish?
I'll finish.
Okay. Jim, do you want to start?
Um.
Do you mind starting us off?
Yeah, I've, I've given a fair amount of feedback. I'm just going to kind of summarize it. Um, one of my biggest requests was that the uh, portrait of a graduate and the definition of student success appear front and center in the document. Um, I also thought that under the accountability section, uh, we're listed responsibilities by the, um, curriculum director and the, the, uh, by Dr. Haynes and, um, different people who are accountable to move this forward. Also, the, the committees that are relative to those subjects get added in as well. So, so ISO would, for example, would be in the target one, which is provide comprehensive education that supports deep learning. Um, the finance would be involved in, uh, developing a dedicated workforce by recruiting, developing and retaining effective professionals. Facilities would be in the, the parts where they're talking about appropriate infrastructure. That way, everybody kinds of follows along as things are developed. Um, there's no surprises and we all can work together on, with our ideas as it goes. Um, I also thought that because of the communications potential of Alma and how that data is going to help refine and tweak the curriculum as time goes on, which that should be added under strategy, under, uh, this is objective A under target one, under the implement plantation evidence, because that'll be a great tool to have that information and apply it. Also, I thought that, yeah, I already said that. Um, also under str- objective B, I thought we're, under implementation evidence, how we will know what, what it's happening. I thought the Marshall evaluations should be added in there, uh, because again, that's a terrific tool um, for, for helping, uh, teachers and administrators keep things on track and you, and kind of develop them as, as things, good time goes on. Um, and then I had, um, my other concern was the timelines of some of these tasks and when, and their completion dates. And I think we need more detail about that. So I had a lot of discussion uh, with Dr. Haynes and, uh, Ms. DeRozier about that. And I've also had discussion with Tom about that. Uh, so we can, we can have some real dynamic focus and, and real sequence to how this comes about. And it's tracked all the way and, and goals are met. Um, so it's, it's not just a, you know, something that's far out from now that is, is, we're reaching for, but it's a, it's a progression. But also some of this stuff, I think, um, needs, needs to happen sooner. This, um, targeting proficiency levels, uh, 2023 to 2027. Well, they're talking about, I guess, year one, having August 2022 have, have those proficiency levels for the next year. Is that right?
Dr. Haynes, do you want to answer that question? You might want to stay up here just because if they, you know.
So the proficiency levels, I think it's going to need to be a, a larger conversation because we still need to identify what those are. But as it's written right now, what we were thinking is you're not going to be able to set the following year's goal without knowing what you have for the previous year's information. So yes, as it's currently written, but I think that that's going to end up being a larger conversation with the board.
Okay. Um, and then the, the new, the new, uh, numeric grades portion. Um, that's a school board goal for this year and I'd like to see significant progress made on that. If, if it can't be completed, um, something that's at least a plan to complete it.
Jim, can I just speak to that just quickly? Um, so it's important to recognize that the board set a goal for the numeric grading and the original plan was to research it this year, figure it out and implement it next year with it being fully implemented by the end of the year. We are way ahead of that. So we, letter grades have been implemented at seven through 12 already. Four, five and six are implementing letter grades literally this right now. And the question is going to be, um, discussed at length. I think we're going to meet that goal by the end of this year.
Okay, great.
So I, I feel very positive about that. We're meeting about it next week for two hours. Um, we're, we're ta- we're taking a very, we believe that that's one of the threads that holds things together is the communication to families. So I just wanted you to feel comfortable that, that, that goal was based on the original plan, but we're moving way faster than, than the implementation timeline. In part because Dr. Haynes worked on it in early this year and really, we just went for it because we felt like it's, it needed to be addressed.
Great. Um, and the, the last thing is, um, the curriculum maps. I think that needs to be a priority. I'm looking at a, a date of by March, 2023. Um, and I, from what Tom just said, the curriculum, well, the curriculum maps are different than, different than the master schedule. But if we don't have an integrated curriculum vertically and horizontally, then we have too many holes in our academics. And to me, having learned what I've learned in the past two years about, about that, um, from talking to parents and, and teachers and a substitute that I'm very close to. There's, there's, that's a big job that, and that needs to be done yesterday or as soon, I mean, really that needs to be done. That's like the number one.
And I think when you and I spoke on the phone, what we had said is we need to be more clear because that's set for everything. That's the end for everything. But what we need to do is be very clear about certain things, certain dates. So you're, you're going by content area and it's more spelled out where that's written very generally is this is when it's going to be done. So we can, we can definitely do that.
Yep, that would be great. That's it for me. Thank you, Jim.
Okay, so I liked, I liked how it's laid out. Um, I like how it's organized. Uh, some of my comments were, I, I did like that the accountability, I'd like the account, accountability cells that, um, specify who's accountable. Um, I'd like Mr. Baker's suggestion, actually of adding the committees. So for strategic target one, objective A here, I was not happy that we were establishing target proficiency levels to increase proficiency so that the district reaches or exceeds the state average each year. I don't, I don't think that's a, an appropriate goal. I, I think that's a mediocre goal. Um, I, Mr. Ambrose, when he started was taught, you know, talked a lot about aiming at 80, you know, 80% of our, 80 to 85% of our population at grade level. And that, that would, that's preferable to me. I think that's a better goal. Um, I had some comments on the proficiency chart. I think I, I asked to have some other, some of the, the Fontes and Penel, some of the other assessments that we use added there. It's loading slowly for me right now. The proficiency chart is really just, is just the, um, I think just the assessments that we get from the state. I, they're the state, um, the state assessment, the statewide assessment test, say on the PSAT and the SAT. Um, I'm just scrolling around here. I do like in that area, objective A, I like, do. I do like in that area, objective A, I like do like that there's some concrete dates and targets in here. I didn't feel that enough of the other objectives had that. I did. That was part of my feedback. Is that the other? Sorry, I'm just clicking here. So some of the other areas just say, we're going to analyze, we're going to assess. I don't think that's, um, specific enough. I would like more concrete timeframes and what we're actually going to do with that information. Analyze student achievement data. You know, conduct administrator walkthrough. Some of the stuff I hope we're already doing, actually. And the other thing that I had noticed was, you know, relative to the facilities. When I was clicking on the goals for facilities, it really just referred to the capital improvement plan. It looks like it looks like some of the verbiage has been changed there, actually. It now says follow timeline outlined in the capital improvement plan. Plan will be approved at a later date. Because I didn't feel comfortable approving a strategic plan that referred to a capital improvement plan that we have actually not discussed yet.
Right.
So I'm happy that that was changed. That's a little clearer.
And just just to be clear, that the the capital improvement plan needs to be approved by the end of the year as well. We just felt like it was too much to to do the strategic plan and the capital improvement plan simultaneously. And we're having some conversations about the formatting of the capital improvement plan as well, because there are some things that are, uh, repair or maintenance issues versus actual capital issues. So we'll, we'll, we'll have a lot more presentation on that in the future. So.
Can you say the end of the year, the school year?
This school year. Yes, this I always think in school years. Sorry. Thank you.
To you.
I'll try to be briefer than I was with Dr. Haynes and Mr. Osher. Mr. Ambrose. Uh, so I'm not, I'm not going to go and I actually sat down for a couple of hours and and I've got nine pages of feedback that I provided. But I want to say something about that. So providing feedback, I've mentioned this before, putting together a straw man is very difficult and the work involved in structuring it is very difficult. Finding that therefore things that that triggers you to think about and to add in or question or critique is very easy compared to that work involved. So I appreciate the work involved in putting it together. So I'll just go through some of the general themes that that we talked about where the concerns were and where I thought things needed to be improved. On general accountability, I thought we needed to have a tighter line as to what the accountability level is. This person's accountable for this. Right now, you have a whole block of people accountable. And you don't know which person in that block is accountable for which strategic item. Also, as Mr. Baker suggested, I also believe that this should be a a five-year plan is I have a current year and four more years. And then the next year, I have a new current year and four more years. I always have a five-year plan. The current year goes by, I analyze it, then I have the fifth year added on. The the current year should be the topic of committee meetings, subcommittee meetings. So for example, on on the strategic objective one, where we're talking about proficiency and grades, et cetera. Those should be the topics that we review in the excellent in student achievement. And when we're talking about the the facilities, et cetera, those should be the items from the strategic plan that we're reviewing. I stressed that this is not Mr. Osher's and Dr. Haynes's plan. This is the school board's plan. And the school board has to own this and adopt it. It isn't just the 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 plan of those that wrote it. And it can't be a static plan. It has to be a live plan. Uh, also on the timelines, I I thought that we needed to tighten up timelines with milestones. Uh, I'll use an old, uh, an old political phrase of trust but verify. When people are responsible for doing things, you still have to make sure that there's some report out, some monitoring and report out. Because absent a definitive report out period of time, it doesn't get to people's priorities. It doesn't get on their calendar. And if it's not on their calendar for a report out, it doesn't make it into the things that I got to get done. And so we we need tighter milestones, um, with those timelines. I talked about proficiency. I I concur with, uh, with Tammy's comment about we we need a we need something that's not mediocre as a goal. The challenge I understand is if you say just simple math, I'm going to be at eighty in math. I'm thirty, so I'm going to get a ten-point bump for the next five years, and now I'll be at eighty. I can understand the reluctance saying, I don't know how to make sure I'm going to give you a ten-point bump. And then you're going to say to me, I didn't get ten points. It's my fault. It's our fault. It's our plan. You pick that you pick the schedule and then you say, these are the actions that we are going to take to make that happen. We believe that these will be the actions that will get us there. And then we analyze that. If it didn't get us there, why not? What worked? What didn't work? What's the new schedule? Are we going to be able to catch that up? What are we going to be doing differently? Who else has other assignments? Where do we reassign resources? But we can't stop and say that the target is less than mediocrity. The target has to be, we have to change the trajectory. We have to develop the 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 culture of excellence that we are. This district is going to be the best performing district or in the best performing districts in the state. And how do we get there? And that's what the strategic to strategic plan is to do. So we had a lot of discussions, um, on that topic. Also, the discussions on the curriculum, uh, I I looked into this UDB format and and Dr. Haynes gave me very, uh, in-depth analysis of this um, and how this process works. And it's a very robust and a strong process. But I also mentioned, uh, I made a comment that, you know, to some extent, this is a guppy trying to swallow a whale. We have to do what we can do. And the first thing that we have to do is lay out, this is the course of study in this grade. Then we can put and make the building blocks much firmer and stronger. But we first have to understand what does it want? What is it that we want to be covered in this grade regardless of who's teaching it? There's your horizontal. And then how are we building this so that when I walk out of this grade, I know X amount of information? And next grade, I can then build on that with Y amount of information. So we do need the the general curriculum map. I I think that the ideas that are outlined in the UDB format are excellent and and they will strengthen it. But the 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 initial focus needs to be the curriculum map. What is it that we are expecting in each grade from each of our kids? So I'm not going to go through all the other items. I did have discussions about grading, great deal of discussions about grading. We will get into that, uh, in the in the meeting on the sixteenth. Ms. Dutton, I have some some feedback for you. I'd like to discuss on that, uh, privately. But there are things that we need to really have heart to hearts. The board, the administration, how do we get there? What are the issues? What do we need to do culturally? How do we drive this? So I won't go through and and I had, I had questions and points and and my own particularities on every bloody strategic item and and objective and in evidence. And and I won't read through all that. If anybody wants that information, be glad to share it with you, but I don't want to be here all night. Uh, I already troubled, uh, Dr. Haynes and Mr. Osher with it. And 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 I say that gestingly, we we had, in my belief, an extremely good discussion. These have been good rapport back and forth. This is what we need to do as a district to come together and to make this work. We need a map that we are going to follow and is going to guide us. And I think that this is the appropriate way to get it. Uh, and I will leave my comments at that.
I'm going to try to follow that. So I really enjoyed and liked how our strategic targets matched and aligned our school board goals, our district goals. I felt the alignment was very well done. Um, I was very pleased that, you know, with target four, really increasing our community partnerships, increasing our community involvement. It's something that I think we've all struggled with, that we need more community involvement as we make these changes, as we grow as a district. I think my only biggest feedback that I had was strategic target one is provide a comprehensive education that supports deep learning and social emotional growth. And I've seen no, they took out all the targets and all the objectives that had to do with social emotional growth. We can't have that as one of our strategic targets if we don't have any tasks or objectives to meet that that goal. And I think the pandemic has really shown how much our youth are struggling with social emotional health. And if they're not emotionally regulated, they're not going to access their curriculum. And we're not going to be able to increase our literacy and math scores if they can't access the schoolwork.
Okay, I think I, like all the other members did. Dr. Haynes, um, a couple of things, and and some of it comes from my experience teaching here, but I I think there has to be definable goals for the students to advance. Now, I know that's Harrison. You've got to make the student feel good so you advance them. But how do they feel when they're eighteen and out in the world, real world? And they calculate simple things. One of the striking things that struck me was order of operations. Oh, you know, they've taught it. But obviously Joey or Jimmy or Jeannie or whatever didn't get it. So how'd they get advanced past the fifth grade without knowing order of operation? Now, I'm only using that for examples. And we talked about a number of things, you know, it's not up to me or the school board to say, well, this is, that's what we have you experts for. So I think it's 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 too much social, it'll hurt. Well, it's going to hurt a heck of a lot more when he or she gets hired. And well, when I was in school, I just needed twenty percent accuracy. Well, that means I lose twenty percent of my customers because you're not making this put this pot right. You know, I can't afford that. You're gone. So, you know. I think we have to prepare the students more for life and be maybe less laser focused on college. I had a plumber come in the other day. A pressure relief valve went in one of my condos. I'm going to guess how much I paid him for an hour's work? Hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Well, that was a good deal.
Well, he was a friend of mine.
What's the plumber's name?
Notice his past tense.
Did you give us his name?
Was a friend of, he is, he is, he's a good friend of mine and and actually said that he was a plumber. But the point is, you become a, you, you know, and I'm not, I don't mean, I I mean, this is a compliment to to people. Three years as apprenticeship. So you get, so you get out at eighteen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, I'll say nineteen, twenty, twenty-one. So twenty-two, twenty-three years old, if you pass the test and you're a licensed plumber and you go out on your own, you're making a hundred bucks an hour. I have a grandson getting out as in this year as an electric, as an engineer, a computer programming engineer. He won't start at a hundred bucks an hour. All right. So I think let's focus on college, which is a hard thing for teachers because we're all college educated, right? You know, so it's a hard thing, but it's getting to the point now. And by the way, electricians, I have a friend of mine's electrician. He's like a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and fifty dollars an hour, you know, um, which I find interesting because I think plumbing is much more fun and much more difficult. And I could have done it, but it happened to be a condo and five years from now, something happens if I like, I've got an electrician coming for wiring. Because ten years from now, who wired that where the fire started? I did. Great. No insurance. So, you know, it's an insurance policy. So please, I know it's going to be hard. But maybe the attainable goals, and I'm sorry, Johnny, Jeannie, Jimmy, whatever, you didn't make it. And, you know, you're going to, when I say you're going to cover your ass, I don't mean it this way, but you're going to make sure that that student got all the help it needed. He needed, she needed. Um, but I I really worry about that because it was glaring every year. That that they they, I I had to actually go back, you know. The other problem, and I'm just thinking of it now, is one of the biggest problems I had as a teacher here, I taught biology, is what don't I teach? I think we talked about that. All right. I've got thirty-eight weeks and a textbook this big. And I say, okay, now I'm not going to teach flowers because, oh, I mean, we don't have a botany course at this school. But I don't have time to teach flowers and, you know, reproductive flowers and all that stuff. We have to look at the curriculum, figure out how to teach. I don't know. Do we have to prioritize? I don't know. But it it always drove me nuts that I had to say, I can't teach this. Because by the time you finish with the genetics and the cell structure and all that. So I think we used to have a department head who taught one less class, made a couple bucks extra, but went down to the elementary schools. Because if I can get a student coming in that I know for a fact absolutely has all those cell pots down nailed, then I don't have to teach the cell again because I go back to, you know, they didn't learn it. Maybe they should have been retained. Heresy, I know. All right. And that also means, and there should be meetings with the middle school and the high school especially, where I know that science teacher covered these and the students know it. So that I don't have to teach it again. And maybe I will be able to teach pots of the plant and plants reproduction, all that stuff. So that was always very frustrating to me, what I didn't have time to teach, you know. So and we talked about that. So, but that's capping what I said.
Thank you.
Laura? Um, so I don't really have a ton of comments other than I I thought this was really well thought out. I organized, I like the color coding, I like the hyperlink. I've kind of made that comment. I feel more in my realm going through Matt's thousand-page budget book than I do going through this. I don't really consider myself, I I I'm an expert in numbers, not really all of this. So hearing feedback from other people. Um, I was in one of the focus groups and, um, I really heard from a lot of parents in particular who really thought these are some good attainable goals and really well thought out. And, um, to me, it really seems very well thought out. I do have a comment when I get back to why I like numbers, uh, just making sure that everything that is in here is is funded, that we're not having these goals. I I I noticed like one thing in particular. I forget where it is, um, but it was like artist and residence program. It was a objective. How do we know that we've attained it? One was the residence and artist program. And if I recall in the past at Bakers, I feel as though the boosters program had to fund that. So I just want to make sure, and I know there's a capital improvement plan, which is a whole other ball of wax there, but um, I just picked out the residence and artist program because I, you know, I believe that was not funded before. Um, and just making sure that these things that we put in here, that we have the money to do that.
Thanks. Um, so I only had a couple of real comments on this. Um, my biggest comments were in target. Sorry. So I only had a couple, a couple of things, uh, and they were in, both of them were in strategic target one. In objectives B through D, we talk about math, literacy, performing arts, co-curricular activities, which is fabulous. But not anywhere in there do we touch on science or social studies, history. Um, I know math and literacy are worked into all of our subjects. But I would like to see them at least mentioned because those are important. Those are part of our core curriculum. Um, so I think they need to be in there as well. And then in objective E, um, portrait of a graduate. Nowhere in here do we talk about preparing our students for life after graduation, the real world, other than through classwork and work-study practices. The intention of everyone involved in creating the portrait of a graduate, and I was part of that, was to make sure that each and every student is prepared, not only for academic success, but also with life skills needed to be successful in the future. So I would love to see that touched on more, um, so it doesn't get lost and overlooked. I think we need to focus on including those skills in advisories. That's something that has been talked about. We've talked about making sure kids know how to balance their bank account, to apply for loans, apply for jobs, interview skills, and have it as a badging system in advisory. Something to that effect. Um, many of our graduates wish they had, we prepared them better with things like how to sew, cook, woodwork, metal shop, general automotive skills, like checking tire pressure, changing a tire. Because not a lot of parents teach those skills anymore. We have those things here available for our students. So having some access to that for our students, I think that's important as well. And, you know, if the students are saying that, that have graduated, like I wish we could gotten that, I think it's important that we listen to that. So I feel like, you know, we do a lot of times get stuck on academics and we forget to prioritize some of the other skills that are equally as important to making them successful to go out into the world. So those are really my two big things.
So next steps, we we are drafting. All of this into, it's good for the community to hear what the board thinks. It's good for the, all the principals are here tonight. They're kind of hanging out over in the. the, uh, the corner over there, but they're listening. And, uh, they, we wanted to hear from you before we start working on the second draft, so, or the third draft. Whatever it takes to get it right, we're gonna do it. And there will be some discussions and we'll have to figure some things out and we'll do it. So we're looking forward to it because it will really help us to focus our work.
Oh, you haven't done it?
So thank you, everyone, for all of your, your, your thoughtful feedback. We really appreciate it. Dr. Haynes, can you stay for one more minute?
Sure.
We, um, the next agenda item is the calendar. Are you ready to move on?
Yep. So seven point one approval of academic calendar for twenty-two, twenty-three.
So I have an idea. The administrators have an idea, but we wanted to talk about it. And if we don't approve it tonight, we can put it on the next agenda, but let's talk about it. We get a little bit of mixed feedback, not a lot about the early release days.
Yeah. About what? Sorry?
Early release days. So we have an idea. Let, let me, let me tell you what our plan, what our idea is, because it might solve the whole thing before. We would like to propose that we have a one-hour early release on Wednesdays. It adds how many hours back into the calendar?
Roughly sixty-six zero instructional hours throughout the calendar year, roughly.
We need time to do all this. We don't have enough time to do it all. But we felt like if we did an hour early release every Wednesday, instead of doing the two-hour ones on the five-day weeks, we're asking parents to take their kids for an hour, we add an hour back to their school week, sixty.
Roughly sixty.
Sixty hours gets added back into the school year. But we also get an extra, so this is the part that people may not understand, and I want the public to understand this. We're scheduling our contractual staff meetings after these hours. So it's an hour out of the school day and then an hour of the staff time. Uh, it'll be two, two a month, right, that that'll happen?
For staff meetings? It's generally one a month and the rest of them are used for PLCs, data, data, yeah.
It's still time.
Yep.
The bottom line is that we get a twofer out of that. So we get the hour that the kids are released early and then we get the hour of the staff meeting. That makes a huge difference. We feel that we can make, I asked the principals, what would you prefer? And they feel like the one hour a week would make a huge difference. So that's what we're asking you to do next year. We have another calendar drawn up to send you and we'll do it at the next board meeting. But what I thought that we would do is share it with you tonight, allow you to think about it, ask questions, and then we can adopt it at the next meeting. We don't have, this isn't an emergency. Yes.
How many hours does a teacher need every three years to get recertified?
Oh, gosh. Well, I'm in the middle of, it's, it's a hundred, so over the three-year period, it's a hundred and, say, a hundred and ten if, for one certification, for one, and then it's an additional thirty for every single one after that.
I had three certifications.
Yeah, me too.
So in three years, I had to get one-twenty plus sixty, a hundred and eighty.
Yep.
And I, and, and because we had the early releases, all right, I was also the, on the certification committee. So they would come in with the paperwork, that's when we did it by paper. And I would, we would enter it in a big book and all that, you know, that works, and we'll put it in a book. So when you start taking those hours away from teachers, you know, a hundred and, I mean, because I, I was on that committee, many teachers even then would come in and say, I don't have enough hours. When's the certification up? Next month, you know, right?
I know.
But I mean, that's their fault. Don't get me wrong. And we always were able to work something out. But all I'm saying is, you want to be real careful that you're not gonna run into problems with the union. And, and justifiably so, in my opinion, because it's hard to get those hours, you know? I had only three, some had more, you know? So when you start taking hours that they were able to get credit for, if you're gonna take from them, what are you gonna give them that they'll be comfortable with?
It's important.
I, I won't be here, so, you know, but I wanted to make sure you brought that into consideration.
Well, it's important to note that we asked for a lot of additional early release days for this year. So we're really splitting the difference.
I think we only had three or four a year. Do you remember?
There were six.
Back in my. Six? Yeah.
We, we had twenty-four this year. Remember?
Why? Okay.
That's what we're talking about.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, the reason why is that there's so much to do in order to align the curriculum, get the learning targets figured out, do all the work that we're doing. We need teacher input and collaboration. So we, we feel like it's a far better thing to have an hour off on Wednesday afternoon consistently and work on these things consistently than to take two hours off here. I, I felt like November, there was nothing, and then December, there were four weeks of two hours off every week, and it just really felt disjointed. I, I, the administrator, I said to the administrators, what do you need? I, I'm their supervisor and I believe in collaborative leadership. And they said, the one hour every Wednesday would make a huge difference, but, but it also put sixty hours back into student learning time, which I loved.
Right, okay. And I just advocated for somebody, but there's one other thing that people don't understand about teaching. When I'm in front of the classroom, that's what you're paying me for? That's the end of my job. All right? We've all perhaps given talks at businesses or corporations, whatever, and we know that we probably put ten hours into that, one-hour presentation. I gave five of those a day. That's fifty hours per day, right? I'm a, you know, of course you have last year notes and stuff. But what I'm saying is, that's the end of your job. What you don't see is all that time building up to that. People say, oh, you got summers off. Yeah. You want a biology teacher that hasn't picked up a science book in ten years because, you know, I'm working during the summer too? I don't know. But, so you have to take that into consideration also. How you do that again, I won't be here, but you've got to understand that those release days for teachers to get that knowledge that is changing and talk to other teachers and set up curriculum, like, you know, I'm gonna say English. Okay, what books are we gonna have next year assigned to the students? Oh, I read this book. When did you read it? Summer vacation? Or when did you read it? Over Christmas vacation? It was a wonderful book. We should have that in the curriculum. So it sounds like time off, but it really isn't time.
No, it definitely will not.
You know, and it's, it's hard.
Very well used this year. We are very, very confident that it's been productive. We just wanted it to be more consistent, but we feel that we don't need quite as much of it.
Yeah, no, no, and, and that's fine. That, that's, that's fine. And just one last personal note. Uh, as, as many of you know, I, I got hurt at work in police department. I said, well, gee, I need a job. Oh, teaching, summers off. Wow, what a great job that'll be. I had no idea what a stupid thing that was for me to think.
Yeah.
All right. Um, I never worked so hard as, as, as a, and I'm saying, I'm not saying, oh, teachers, that's not what I mean. It was like, no, it's not just in front of the classroom like I thought.
That's right.
You know, so you, you've got to take that in consideration when you make your decisions.
Thank you.
I do think the, every Wednesday, the same would be, as a parent, it's way, like, yes, I have the calendar, but I'm like,
I know.
Okay, this month, we only have two half-days, but this month, we have four, and then I gotta do childcare, parents. And then you have these full-day Fridays off, like, yes, we know, parents, the school is not a babysitter and, you know, but I think for parents trying to plan and organize, the consistency is more important. Because it's, I think that'll be easier for parents. Okay, every Wednesday, I know my kid will be home an hour early. I can, I can plan for that. And I do think going from six half-days to twenty-four half-days, i- it's a huge shift for families.
So I'll make a few points. I agree with Heather on, on that. I don't think we should decide this tonight. I think we should give the, uh, the community a chance to weigh in on there. This is, this is a topic that I hear of quite often, um, from constituents. And, uh, just kind of to address Pete's comments. The, particularly the certification ones, these weren't created, this time wasn't created to help people get certification. This time was created to help teachers collaborate for the improvement of the kids and for the performance of the kids. So I understand that, yes, it's difficult to get certification, but that's not what the cause of this to be expanded during COVID was, from what it was previously. I do think that the numbers that we had this year are excessive. That's my personal opinion. It is very difficult for parents to schedule around it. And, and to Heather's point, I, I can look at the calendar, but, you know, I find that my child comes home at noon, what the heck are you doing here? So, um, I, I, I think it's more than it should be. I do think from a, uh, my perspective would be from a parental perspective that parents will be better able to manage with a set routine that they can structure around than some weeks it's this, some weeks it's that, some months I have every Wednesday, some months I have no Wednesdays. Uh, I, I just think that that's difficult. But I do just want to reiterate that time, the intent is, the time is for collaborative work by the teachers and the administrators to better position ourselves to impart learning to the kids.
So I think, just to clarify, that Pete's point about certification is sometimes a secondary outcome of work that you do in professional development. It's not the primary goal.
Right.
But, so if you attend a, a training for whatever UBD and you get, um, a certificate from that training for UBD, it counts toward your certification and you can do it in the school. So it's not an, an or, it's an and, and. So it's just, it's the way education works that professional development counts for both. But it's important also to note that the early release days are being used for curriculum alignment, conversations about the strategic plan. We, we have done a lot of heavy lifting in the midst of a very messy situation. The, the piloting of the math program, the, at seven through twelve. I mean, it has been very, very effective. And I was really impressed that the administrators said, yeah, we, we, they feel like having it be consistent would help, it helps both people. So you always look for an answer that can help both groups of people. The parents would know it's Wednesdays for an hour and the staff would know that they'll have an hour to work on collaborating for curriculum purposes. So let's bring it back in two weeks. Okay? All right, great, cool.
Tom, I want to point out, I just counted. So with twenty-four half-days, that gave them forty-eight hours. Doing this, they get thirty-seven.
Right, right. Correct, Patty?
Yep, that is correct. And I just wanted to quickly point out this year, to use those days, we, we were able to give all the K through six teachers training in the math program. There was a lot of math program training. All of our K-six teachers had training in responsive classroom, which helps with the socially emotional components. Next year, we're gonna be delving in further into NIASC. So a lot of that work is gonna have to get done at some point. So just to keep those things in mind.
Patty, can you explain why, I, I had shared that you would, we had, you and I had talked before this about there being sixty more hours of instructional time with one-hour early release. How does that work? Because Dom is just saying it's basically ten hours of, of added. Can you, can you just explain for the board?
So what, what we looked at is we counted out, and it's not every single Wednesday. I didn't count all the Wednesdays. And looking at calculating roughly the instructional minutes and converting the instructional minutes to hours. So it's instructional minutes. It's not just, because during your day, you've got lunch, you've got some of these other, so it's instructional minutes to hours in a year. So that's the difference.
Some, sometimes when we work on complicated problems, I, there's a moment where I just feel like it's the right answer. I think we're there with this and we need to hear your questions and any questions from the community, Jamie. That's fine.
Can, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Is it, I, I, I feel like somewhere a question or point was made of, um, this year was too many. I think Jamie said, I feel like maybe you might have alluded that maybe some of the administrators thought that or something.
Oh, well.
Is this still, I know this is a reduction of hours. Is that gonna be too much still or?
No, we, we feel like doing, so right now, there's over two hours in really chopped up sections. So we, what we agreed on last year was that we would do early release every five-day week for the year. And what that did is it made it so, for example, November had almost no early releases or had no early releases, and December had one every week. So it's made it super lopsided this year that it's, that it's just not working. So what we discussed is it would be better to consistently have one hour every Wednesday so that we can add our staff meetings when we can and get a two-hour block. And just know that it's every Wednesday for an hour so that teachers can work collaboratively to plan and, and do all the things that we're asking them to do.
But that's not too much time as opposed to the six early releases that were.
Yeah, we, we feel, yeah, no, we feel like this would be an appropriate amount of time. Yeah. We talked about it at length yesterday morning. Thanks for asking, though. Administrators, does anyone wanna? I mean, I know I'm speaking for you, but if anyone wanted to add anything, feel free. You don't, don't feel like you have to. They're all kind of.
I think it's more about the way it's spread out. Instead of this, you know, we are all struggling with trying to figure out what's happening this week too. So it's, it just, it would be easier.
I know, last week, my son texted me at, you know, one-thirty and I yelled at him, why are you on the phone? I'm home. Oh, you know, so I get, I get the consistency part of it. So I, I can, I, you know?
No.
I do like that. I just didn't know if it was, I know it's less than this year, but relative to ten years ago, are we still going, is it going to be too many hours?
Right. No, and, and, yeah, and I just, just because you guys asked what, I mean, the principals, I think, we agree pretty much with everything that's already been said. We need more time. That's the bottom line, right? You, you gotta have time to work through these issues. These are really big issues. It's not a top-down approach that we're looking for. The teachers, they're on the front lines. They're in the trenches with the kids. They have to be a part of the development of the plan and the implementation of the plan, whatever that's gonna look like. Or the plan's not gonna work, right? So, and the, the momentum piece is that consistency of having it on a regular basis, right? The feedback we got this year, for example, we didn't have any early releases pretty much until, it was like late October. Right? So a lot of that work where we're trying to get things going, we couldn't do that before then. So, and when we were a larger school district, it was a lot easier to schedule time at different points in the day, it's size of scale, but now we're not. And as we get smaller and we're continuing to try to operate the same kind of programming for the kids, our teachers are wearing more hats, right? So it's just, this is, it's a big lift to make sure that we have that time available to be able to do all this work that we have to do.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Brian.
Great. So we'll talk about this in two weeks.
Just a quick question. How do you, how are you gonna go about soliciting feedback? Are you going to put something out?
I, I think that the way to solicit feedback is the way, I, I, I'm not, this is a school board decision. So I would recommend that we put it on the public agenda and I'll put out a notice saying that we're discussing it, and if people want to email or, or give us feedback, then they can. But I, I really, I don't really like blind surveys. I just don't think they're effective. If people want to share with us their, their perspective, they should, honestly, I prefer that people come to the meeting. Right? But if they want to email us, that's where we live in twenty-twenty-two. But I would say, Heather, that I just kind of be a little more explicit that we're going to be discussing an hour early release day versus the two-hour, and what, what do you think?
Yeah.
All right. On to seven point three, policies for first read.
Great. Um, I, yep, I can, there are three policies for first read and, uh, um, I would just say that you can move them as a group or you can move them individually. It's up to the board. The first one is EBCA, which covers emergency plans. And then EE AEA dash R, I'm not going to try to say that ten times fast. It's drug and alcohol testing for school bus in commercial vehicle drivers. And the FAA, which is the annual facility plan.
I'd like to move the, uh, three policies, uh, and bank together.
One second.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor? Unanimous? All right, and I am going to move my seat because Matt is going to present the slides for the warrant article.
So I'll give a quick overview of what's about to happen. Mr. Angel and I met and Mr. Angel developed statements for each warrant article to be read at the deliberative next week. And then we made a draft of assigning a warrant article to a board member to read. If you don't like the one that's been assigned to you and you'd like to jockey or swap cards, we're fine with that. We just went with who we thought would be logical. Yes, Pete?
I had a discussion last week, at the last meeting with Jamie and, and Dawn. Did you, were you aware of it?
No.
I'm sorry.
I, 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 I've been a little.
Oh, no, 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 it's okay.
Take the hit on this one because I came up with the idea and I didn't communicate it to him. And I talked to Jamie, so if you don't mind, I'm gonna, I hate doing this. I'm gonna give Jamie a compliment. Oh, my God.
He's going out with a bang.
When Fred's, Red Fox used to say, Martha, I'm coming, I'm coming, Martha.
Jamie did, in my opinion, of six years in the board, gave one of the best presentations on the financial issues. last meeting.
Yep.
And because he's chair of the finance committee, it was my suggestion and Dawn didn't say no, I didn't seem upset. So I'm gonna say she passively said, okay. My suggestion is that when it comes to the finance ones, Jamie do them all. Because he already has experience of doing it and he did, in my opinion, one of the best jobs I've ever seen on presenting the finance side. So I hate to take your thunder from you and I wish I had told you soonest because I'm sure you put hours of work into this. And, you know, so my last hurrah for you guys is tough. So you worked extra. Anyway, no, um, what do you?
I'm fine with whatever the will of the board is. We were just trying to prepare.
I mean, you were all here when.
Ready for you.
I think it's fine if Jamie does all of, Jamie, Jamie can present all the articles.
I set you up that if you say no, it's like, no, I didn't think he gave a good presentation. That's not my point though. It's not what I intended, but he really did a bang up job.
So is the will of the board that Jamie just present the warrant articles? Make a motion?
I don't about all of them, but at least the finance ones.
Well, they're all finance.
Okay. I didn't look at that. Jamie, I threw you under the bus. What do you want to do? Do you have an objection to this?
I, I don't, whatever, I'll, I'll, I'll use Tom's phrase, whatever the will of the board is.
I think it, I mean, I think the flow is better when it's, I mean, in terms of like keeping the meeting going versus, okay, now I get up or now I speak. So.
Okay. All right. We need a motion.
Motion for Jamie to read all the warrant articles.
Second.
Oh.
Well, Matt, you did.
So then I guess, uh, any further discussion?
Yeah. My discussion is could you hold Jamie here until I'm in my car and down the street?
I know where you live.
All right. Uh, all in favor? Except you.
All right.
Uh-oh.
Wait a minute. You don't want to do it?
I'll abstain.
Oh, gosh. So then Matt, you can just send those slides to Jamie and we'll talk to him about the wordsmithing. You don't need to do this tonight.
Perfect. All right.
Thank you very much. That was easy.
Good job.
Good job, Matt.
Thanks, Pete.
Pete, great job communicating to the superintendent what your evil plans are.
You're not.
What can I say?
Yeah, he's not on the communications. Thank you, Peter. That's a great idea.
Just like, I had talked to Jamie about this and I did talk to Dawn and I did ask Jamie, it's all right if I talk to Dawn. So I thought I had all my bases covered, but.
I dropped the ball.
Didn't.
No, you didn't. I'm making fun of Pete. I like having.
How many more times does he have to get me? I'm gonna use this for another half hour. Yeah, I gotta tell you, I really didn't have to come here late, but I figured it'd give me less chance for you guys to attack me because.
All right. Well, that was too easy. Sorry, Jamie, and thank you. We should all send Jamie some chocolate. I, I think we owe Jamie some extra sweets and treats before that meeting.
Give him a raise.
Yeah. You get quadruple zero. COVID school plan.
All right. So I'll, I'll just quickly say that, um, I, Dr. Heans would probably like to head home. So I wanted to kind of talk to this quickly in case you have a question for her. We have found that it has been very effective, the plan that you adopted. We have found that when the schools, so I, I watch what we have for known COVID data. I do think that around the, the, the board meeting in March, the one after the, the voting, the first deliberative, um, once the chair is selected and the, and the board is set, we should start having a conversation about how much longer are we going to continue to even have that conversation? But right now, the BAKI school is having a significant number of cases and a significant number of absences related to COVID. And today it went down to six percent. So it's following the trend of what the medical professionals said would occur with the, the, the spike in January. They said it would end around February tenth. Two of our schools are currently on mask recommended and BAKI has lagged behind because they're having a, a lot of absences and they are. So there's two, two types, right? One is kids who have COVID. And then the other type is absences related to a COVID situation. And Kristen has, Kristen McNulty, who enters the data and looks at all the absence types. So every time they, they calculate the data, they do what the board asked, they look through the absences and take out absences that aren't medical related, right? And the reality is our absences are still where they are. So we, we, we hope that by Monday or Tuesday, BAKI will also be unrecommended and this bubble from, from the holiday break will finally end. But we feel like the plan, when we look at all the different factors, it has been very clear that the plan, the, the absences are really the best indicator. I think it's really working. And so does the team. I mean, it's not just me, it's we, not me. So I, I, if you have any questions or concerns, we can entertain those.
I'm not sure who was first.
Um, do you think BAKI has higher rates because the, there's less kids that can be vaccinated?
I, I do think that may be a factor, but I don't have any evidence to back that up. I don't know their vaccination status.
So I, I agree that the, the, the plan has worked better than what we had previously. My disappointment is those most impacted, most impaired, most negative consequences for having a mask on is the people that we still have masks.
I, I feel the same way. Yeah.
And, and, and my personal opinion is we ought to just move forward and, and make it optional. I mean, your suggestion is that it'll probably be there, you know, soon anyways. It just, i- if it's not, then another two weeks go by, six weeks mask for, for these little kids that they can't see faces. They, it, they, they can't see their teachers' faces. They're trying to pronounce words. They're the least at risk of, for serious impacts of anybody and, and, and we're still getting them masked up. And that's, I, I've got a problem with that. I, I, I understand why. But at some point in time, we can't keep kids masked forever. We just can't.
Thank you, Jamie. So the way to, to address Jamie's concern is to, to either check back in in a couple of weeks, which is what I would recommend because until we can open the windows and get things moving, I'm a little nervous about school being open if we go to mask recommended without having the absences come down. That's my only thing is I, I just want school to be open. So if the options are o- o- open and mask recommended, open and mask required, or not open and mask recommended, I'm taking mask required every time because in-person learning is way better than remote. And I don't even want to think, I, I have nightmares about remote for the rest of my career. So, so what I would recommend to you is that you hold steady with the plan and see how things go for a couple more weeks and then we can revisit. And just when I said March, the reason why I said March is because I think the spike's gonna come down and we're gonna go to recommended anyway. And then I think mid-March, when you can open up the windows and get airflow and the weather's warmer, things are gonna get way better very quickly. We've seen that every year. So I, I'm just saying, I'm, I'm recommending to you that you keep the current plan. We've only had it for a month. But it's up to you. I, it's the will of the board.
I think this is a very, very good plan. I've been talking because, you know, I have a lot of children, so I have a lot of mothers. My grandchildren, they're almost envious of our plan. Because they're in some school districts where masks are absolutely required.
Oh, my son's school's that way. There's no plan.
Headaches while, right? Kids are coming home with, well, they're, they're one of the, coming home with headaches. They hate to go to school. They don't want to go to school. Um, one of them never had a problem with his son saying, yeah, I'm going to school. You know, you get out or I'm gonna pour the water, you know? Um, it's been awful in, in some of those districts. So we, where we, we have a logical sequence to what we're doing. But I also think based on the news today and the John Hobson report, you may see significant changes in the requirements of what we're going to have to do anyway.
Yep.
So I say, hold the course and let's see what the next couple of weeks is gonna bring.
All right. There's no motion. So we will check back in in two weeks. All right.
Second public comment. All right. Uh, next meeting, uh, next Sanborn Regional School Board meeting will be held on Wednesday, February sixteenth at six PM in the library at the Sanborn Regional High School. The first voting session of the annual school district meeting deliberative session will be held on Wednesday, February ninth. That's next week at seven PM in the auditorium at Sanborn Regional High School. Mr. Broderick.
We have non-public, I take it?
We do have one.
Make a, make a motion to the non-public RSA ninety one dash A colon three, two, C and K.
All right. Roll call vote.
Do we get a second?
Second. Second.
Thank you.
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Yep.
Maura?
Yes.
Myself, yes.